Hey guys, Kim here on the line. I'm not sure if we can start anything.
I didn't, Kim, I didn't hear what you said.
Can you hear us?
Oh, now I can. Did it just start?
Yeah. Oh, you could.
They couldn't hear us.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Okay, so Jay, we're on the approving the minutes. JJ requested that we add in that Joel Haugen can contact her to discuss Chapman Landing issues or just points of discussion. She would like to add that to the minute, so I asked if there was a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as amended.
Perfect, thank you. I'll second that.
You'd be our first, I believe. Do have a second.
I can second it.
Okay, perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Hey Joel.
We'll have to approve the actual minutes.
Oh, so now we go back and approve the actual minutes?
You added the modification. Was the motion to add a modification and to approve them, or just to modify it?
Oh, I was thinking it was to add the modification and approve them.
We can record it that way, as long as the understanding is there.
Fantastic, thank you. But comment tonight? Go ahead Joel.
Well, quick, couple quickies. First, I'm just really delighted that we have two members from the Scappus Park and Rec Committee that are running for council this year. So that is just so cool to see that kind of engagement that's been stimulated out of the Park and Rec Committee. So both Andy and Kim will be on the ballot. Not only that, we've got the prospective new mayor with us this evening, Joe Backus. So we've got, this is just really cool public engagement. So I couldn't be happier as a citizen now that we're having this kind of engagement within the community. So it's very cool. Then the other quick thing is I met with the Scappus Historical Society at their monthly meeting last week, and they are planning to do a really robust Christmas tree lighting contest this year, just for fun. But they would like, you know, to have it promoted by the Park and Rec Committee, maybe whoever's interested in maybe helping and judging and so forth, and even developing some prizes, because they like to have a series of prizes, because people put a lot of effort into this. So this can be, you know, can be a really neat thing, you know, like you see in Portland all the time. So just a heads up on that, so they would really like support from the city and from...
I think the best way, I think that that sounds, that sounds fun, like a fun project for us to engage in. I think the best way to manage that would be to have them contact possibly, like Isaac, so that he can get that information to us, and then we can best, we can deliberate and see how we could potentially be involved.
So should I, should I suggest then that Janet contacts Isaac for the, like the agenda, or?
Yes, yeah, that'd be perfect.
Do.
Great.
Right, good work.
Thank you Joel.
Since Joel mentioned my name, I'll get up and introduce myself, Joe Backus, and I just want to appreciate, thank you guys for doing this and being on this Parks and Rec Committee. It's, the Parks and Recs is dear to me. Lived here over 40 years of my life, and a lot of it revolved around the parks, coaching, taking my kids, and so it's real important to me, and I just wanted to thank you guys for the work you're putting in, see what comes of it in the future.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and introducing yourself.
Oh wait, I had a really quick announcement. So, I'd ask Kara, so I just wanted to give a shout out for the Movies in the Park. We have had hundreds of people showing up each week. Last week, we had more people than the last. It's going extremely well. We have two more weeks of it. This week is going to be Beetlejuice, and it looks like we're going to have a huge turnout for that. And then the final week is going to be Princess Bride, where Fred Meyer is going to be donating sheet cakes in Princess Bride decorations. It'll be free cake, let them eat cake. And so free cake for everybody that shows up, as long as supplies last, you know, and the great thing about it is that we've been able to do, you know, four events for right around $5,000. So total, that's been our total cost. We got a grant from Columbia River PUD. We also got assistance from the City of Scappus, and, you know, our volunteers and our businesses that have been supporting us have just been off the hook. So we're looking forward to doing it next year, and the big screen is great, and weather's cooperating, so the humidity will be gone, and the high will be 80 degrees. Thank you.
JJ?
Hello there, Sigurd with Columbia County. I wanted to give you guys a bit of a explanation of a proposal that I am working on. The Columbia County and the Columbia County Museum Association is in the process of working with the City of Rainier and City of Klatzkyni for interpretive signage installation project that will very much resemble the signage that we've installed along the Crown Z Trail. We would like to include the City of Scappus in this project. Specifically between Turtec Trailhead and Chapman Landing to identify for Scappus up to 10 locations to install bike signage that's along the Crown Z Trail. We have two different kiosk structures, and along with some benches, to tell the history of Scappus in very specific ways at specific locations, along with other interpretive educational information, such as the, anything from Wild Columbia County page has some really neat stuff on there with birds and native species along that section of the trail. There's some interesting history with the Dyke and the Drainage District, surface mining and quarry mining could be topics. We have identified that the Turtec family obviously has some rich history, enough to have a trailhead named after them. We have Watts, I believe it's EM Watts. One of the Wattses, the original settlers here, founded the first school in Columbia County, write it about the Turtec Trailhead, and we have photos and a story to tell about that. The Meyer and Ead sites are important archaeological sites that have to do with the Native American spots that have been discovered. Those, of course, you wouldn't identify the exact location, but tell the story and show photos and reference to the, all the work that's been done at those sites. Hudson Bay Company had a horse farm out here, the Hudson Bay Trading Company, so there's some really neat history there. The McKay Grave Site is in the general area, and there's fun stories to tell about that. Obviously Chapman Landing, logging and rail history. A whole lot of information we compiled about those, about that history. So 10 locations, I'm going to propose with kiosks, benches. Obviously, we'll need help with the City of Scappus and you folks on identifying those locations. They could be as simple as just a spot to put up an interesting sign, or maybe a spot to have a sign and a bench, potentially additional bicycle repair station, very much in line with what we've done with the rest of the Crown Z Trail. County assistance for installations, 10 locations with these installations, we would do the installations, that's around a $5,000 value. And most exciting about Scappus is there is a local sponsor I've met with. There's a string attached, but $20,000 donation towards the project for the City of Scappus. I'll leave their name out of this at the moment. The stipulation is they would like some sort of recognition at, along the trail, and that can be tricky, but I think $20,000, and it could really set the stage for additional donations for these sorts of things. So I think it's a heck of an opportunity. Actually, if I could get a spot on, is it next month, the same week of the month? I think I should be able to have everything ready for more of a formal presentation and a PowerPoint to go over the details and show examples, but I was hoping to get you folks excited about the concept, and really give a continuity of a design along the whole 25-mile system for this first two miles or last two miles, depending on what you want to call it. And then beyond that, with Chapman Landing, maybe, so you guys are aware, that the agreement to transfer Chapman Landing property to the city had a stipulation that the county would be a collaborator in the design. So it's more of a request to, a formal request to, whether it be myself, and I would definitely raise my hand for that, but to be part of that ad hoc committee to work with the city on that design, and that was for the nature of the essence of the agreement, and it's stipulated there in some format, that a condition that we put with the transfer was collaboration with us. It's very important to the county to have consistency along the trail, and Chapman Landing is a huge part of the trail. So would request that we could get some sort of formal position in, be that helps with the overall design of Chapman Landing.
Casey, I have two questions for you. Firstly, so thank you for the information. Were you looking for the city to, or for funding sources from the city to, for these signs, or are they already, is that it for already?
I mean, it was, at first, it was a $5,000 to $10,000 donation proposal. After doing some site visits along the trail, it turned into a $20,000 donation. We are asking the other cities if they're able to, to provide some funding. We haven't got that nailed down entirely. It could be helpful, and I could work out those details in the presentation and the proposal that I provide, or just about there with the $20,000 donation, to be honest with you. So in that way, if, if we can find a way to recognize the sponsor in a tactful way, we don't want it to look like a NASCAR track, obviously. So I think there's some ways we could do that and find the, an appropriate way to do it. But yes, that could be helpful for the overall project, but these installations typically cost, if you include our labor, we employ these folks anyways, one reason for the county to help with the installations, we've installed so many of these structures and really have it down. Basically, can do two a day, it's you set up the concrete and posts one day and finish the next day, and then there's some other background work, but you're in the 2,500 to $3,000 or so range, depending on how much signage is on each structure. And then if you add a bench, our bench designed for the trail, it's a very sturdy sign that will last essentially forever. I believe those are around $600 or $700 per bench, so you're spending a little bit extra on a bench, but again, it has that consistent look with the rest of the trail, and we would help install those as well. At the very least, working with the Parks Department or Public Works Department here in Scappus, potentially to help with some of those installations would be, that would obviously be a big help, and then some level of donation to show skin in the game, but mostly what I'm asking for is collaboration and buy-in to this concept that I do think is very important for the overall trail system, and is a really neat thing. And we have, there's a concept, maybe a little bit of a stretch, but a linear museum of sorts, and it's really turning into that. I think we have good news to share next month about the whole trailhead appears to be funded. That'll be a couple hundred thousand dollar project that installs this, the same stuff. We've already made these installations happen in the City of Ernonia, so it's a pretty unique thing. About every mile or two, you come across similar structures that have, that are backed up by a website that also provides additional information about each of those locations. It's turned into a pretty neat thing that's, that has already been regionally recognized as something unique in all the rails to trails out there, ours stands out in that way, that local history and the interpretive information. So we can work out those details, that would be helpful for a financial commitment of some sort from the city, but given the funds that we've already got our hands on, I think we could do a hell of a lot of it with a very small commitment from the City of Scappus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, moving on to city update.
So the committee sent multiple questions to us for the last month. Those are not the questions. And so over the last month, we fielded multiple questions, so I'll kind of go through them. There's some more discussion about the Chapman Landing kayak launch. Essentially, we spoke with our planner and Public Works, and well, it seems like this would be a fairly quick and easy project, nothing related to Chapman Landing, is that simple?
No.
We do like the suggestion that someone made that this be part of the master plan and brought up. We think this would be one of those improvements that we could do, even if we're not, you know, depending on how prioritization of projects happens, you know, there's always room to do these small things. So if something were to shift, you know, there, there might be an opportunity to do that. We think that would be a great place for it. You know, we can, you know, keep talking about it if you'd like in here, that's not a big deal. But again, you know, as we're moving into the master plan process, you know, that is probably the best vessel for these kind of new projects. Pickleball was one of them, probably this, and just because they go in there doesn't mean that they won't happen, it's just, in more timely manner, it's just that that would be a good way to kind of enshrine them, so that they will happen. You can interrupt me and stop me for questions on each topic. I can go through them however you'd like.
Just a reminder that I know I want to talk a little more into the mic, because...
Yeah, I turn the volume down in here, because it causes feedback, but they can still, they should be able to stay here, still.
It sounds clear on my end, I think.
Awesome. There was an ask to have the September meeting at Chapman. At this point, I'm not sure, I haven't heard back from our lawyer. There is a state law in the books that requires all public meetings to be accessible via some kind of electronic means. That could prove challenging out there to actually hold a public meeting there where decisions are made. That doesn't mean you can't meet out there and not have a meeting. It just means that actually, holding a meeting out there could be a problem. If we're talking about any topics, approving agendas minutes, talking about things, that might be difficult. So stay tuned, I'll get an answer on that.
Could we have Zoom on like a cellphone, or something like that?
I don't know, that's still waiting for answers about whether that would be sufficient. So that's, that is on the table, he just hasn't responded yet. So tomorrow we'll get, hopefully, before Ox gets out of town for the week, answers. We did hear also that the committee wants to talk about the team agreement, and that's part of the reason why the September meeting might be difficult out there, is that if we're going to be reviewing something like that and asking that changes be made, or doing changes like that, it really does need to be in the public.
Me? What agreement?
The team agreement. So it's just an agreement that all the committees have that talk about basic conduct. It's every year, we kind of go over and approve it. I think it's been over a year since we do. It's just kind of like basics, like pretty members of respect, not interrupting, kind of that kind of a thing, but all the committees have it. Might happen next month. And the last one was about the zip line, and your concern about not being included in the decision-making process. So really, from what I understand, so Dave's been out for this week, so I've not had an answer directly from him. Obviously, he's not here tonight, he's out of town. My understanding is that he has been hoping to upgrade the existing equipment for a while, and add this specific amenity for quite a while. So for this fiscal year, we were going to do evidently more than just that, but things didn't turn out that way, so this wasn't the plans to do. Also, the playground equipment that was at Heritage and at Miller Park were both ordered and installed without coming before this committee, so we were just kind of following our past. We've done benches along the Chapman Landing Trail, that has not been requested to come here, so we didn't have a history of doing that, and that's why it wasn't here. A lot of us at the city, that was the first time we heard that this was something that they were doing as well, and as you know, you know, we do talk to you about what's happening, bring updates, say this is going on, we're doing mowing, and we're doing, you know, we're going to be up at the dog park, and we're going to be doing seeding up there, and we're going to install a gate, and so we're not trying to outloop anybody, just happened to fall that way this time.
So I do, I, I have feelings. So at Miller Park, when that happened, I mean, that was actually a point of contention when that happened several years ago, because we, we were in the process of, at that point in time, building the master plan, and the equipment had been taken out and put back in. And so we were, at the time, we had been talking about specific, like, do we want like a nature-based, like, tight play area, and then something was taken out and put in in the middle of that master planning. And so that kind of wiped out all of our plans for Miller Park, and so we had brought that up and addressed it at that time, and then, and I, Dave started, I don't know if it was Dave, I can't recall who was there at that time, because it was five, six years ago. So we, they kind of were like, oh, we did not realize that this would be as much of an attention as it was. But I think the, I would say there's a couple, a couple of challenges. At that point in time, you know, they said, well, you guys are just an advisory committee, but this is a $25,000 piece of equipment, so we kind of felt like maybe we could be brought in on that, since it's so big, and anything that we had been asking for had been put on hold up until, you know, the master plan had begun, so we're kind of waiting on that. I understand there's lots of moving pieces, especially summer, people are out, but that, that is just, on my end, it was just frustrating, like, I think, I think had Dave come to the meeting and said, five minutes, said, hey, like, we recognize that you're wanting this and this and this, that we are looking forward to seeing in the master plan, so that we can have like a really focused idea for like pickleball or disc golf. In the meantime, playground equipment needs to be updated, I'm looking at this or this, what are your guys' thoughts? I would have felt much better about that, for sure. The second piece was adding the concrete paths at Miller Park, which I have attempted to listen to the city council meeting, I was out of town.
Concrete pads at Chapman?
At Chapman?
Chapman.
Okay, I have it in the...
It was also, no, I think there were also some concrete walkways being proposed within Miller Park, and then some asphalt proposed at Chapman to cover up the loose gravel.
Oh, that, I mean, that, obviously, that makes sense. I guess the, like, we were kind of, my initial thought at Miller Park is, is that just upgrading what's already there, or, because in the original master plan, we had kind of like pathways going to something, but that's so long ago, and then, of course, new equipment's there, and then they've added, they've created, so so much has changed there, so like, what, what is that? Like, can we have an update on that? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, he's been out of town, he hasn't been able to weigh in, and he is the right authority for that.
Yeah.
We'll pass along your concerns.
Yeah.
And that.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to...
Okay, my group.
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Just remember that we're not going to be able to hear very well, and hear on the mics that we're hearing in the speakers, they can hear fine. It's just lower, so we don't get feedback.
Just to clarify, is it the fact that weren't notified, is it the cost, what is it that, that bothered you, I guess, or was bothered? So a couple of things. So, yeah, so we have been asking for inclusive play equipment. Items in amenities in parks that are, you know, for a broad variety of ages, and they have been kind of delayed up until for the master plan. And so then to put in like a really big expensive piece of equipment that doesn't meet like any of that criteria, and also like, wasn't really, I mean, obviously, like, I don't need to be the approval for everything, like, I definitely don't want it to come across like that, but it's also like, it's a, it's a big thing that wasn't even brought up at the meetings, it was brought up at city council, but so Parks and Rec would not have known about it had, like, I mean, I guess you, you could have been there, but then it's, everything's already in play. So I, it kind of questions like what our role is in a, in a way, like, if we don't know what's happening in the parks, like, what, what is our role?
Are you asking for clarification on your role?
That, yes, definitely, definitely, and especially...
Kara, sorry Kara, whenever you're done, if I could add some thoughts.
No, I would say definitely a clarification of roles, and again, like, I love the fact that, like, they, I mean, they give us, like, sometimes we get a lot of information, like, we bought a new lawn mower, and we did this and this and this, and we reseeded this, and we're going to put grass here, but then, like, we didn't hear that there was very expensive zip line being purchased, and it's like, what? So it was just a little bit, it was definitely surprising.
Just as, just to reiterate too, that was news to a lot of staff.
Yes.
So we don't, again, hold things back from the committee.
Yeah.
Sometimes things happen and fall into place where we need to be able to move quickly.
Yeah.
If, if we don't move, we lose the opportunity.
Yeah.
So, so it's not meant to make people feel like they're being left out, but if we wait, sometimes it doesn't happen, and our duty is, is to execute council's goals, and if council, you know, Dave felt he was directed to do that, I'm not saying that's what happened.
Right.
We have to take the opportunity, because that's our job.
Yeah.
And I don't know what happened here, I'm not saying that that did or did not happen.
Right.
But that does occasionally, is going to occur.
Yeah.
And sometimes, you know, we protect against as much as we can, but we only need every 30 days, and in the interim, we have 21 days or so that we are all working, things change.
Yeah.
You know, we'll keep coming back and bring more information. I'll talk to Dave and see what was going on with the zip line, and kind of go through that.
I mean, I, I think kids are going to love it. It's hard to be upset about a zip line. It's a fun piece of equipment. It was just kind of like, we have, we have, you know, have these running lists of things that we're like really hoping for, that we're hearing from the community that they want, that's very inclusive, that's, you know, that's going to hit a lot of these pieces, and we're like, we've been told no for so long, and all of a sudden, like, this is going to happen. So, but I would love to stop talking and hear what other people think.
I think that's your cue, Kim.
Thank you. It's a little hard not participating on teams. So Janet, I mean, I think you really hit kind of the nail on the head when you ask, you know, is it that we need clarification around our role, and I think that's exactly what we need. We've been told that we are here to serve in an advisory capacity, and I feel that we have done that to the best of our ability, but it's not, but it's not actually happening. The input that we offer, as Kara mentioned, we're often told no, and we'll just take pickleball as an example, you know. Pickleball was initially brought up by Counselor McHugh, seconded by Counselor Haugen at the time, championed within, we got estimates, about $25,000 to $30,000. We talked about placement of a couple, a couple placement options, we're going to make any physical changes to the parks prior to the parks' master plan. So to be hit with a proposal that we hadn't had any opportunity to put input on, we are not serving in an advisory capacity, and council was open to physical changes of parks in, in the short-term plan, right, so this is before we even have consideration of this parks' master plan process, and that, you know, a project that, to my knowledge, to the Parks and Rec Committee to ask for, and it will serve a very limited age group, or pickleball serves like ages eight to 80, right, that it all just kind of got like, yeah, great, thanks for bringing it up, Dave. So I think it all kind of does call back into question, what is the role of this group? And we need to understand that before we embark on this eight-month process of a parks' master plan, because it's going to be very hard to be invested in that if we don't have acknowledgement that, yes, we are here to serve in an advisory capacity, and that what we contribute is going to matter.
So I got a couple responses. So if, we talked about pickleball as staff, and that $30,000 would be if we did that in-house and bought the concrete and all those, and we don't have the staff to put on a project like that, which means we have to go out and get a consultant, which means we have to pay prevailing wage, which is about $50 an hour in contractor pricing, and so that, that estimate goes up about three times to about 100 grand to install courts. So that's one thing, which is, it's far outside the city manager's discretionary spending. So that's one thing, which is, it's far outside the city manager's discretionary spending. Council would have to act and allocate and do a budget adjustment to make that particular project happen. So those, a pickleball court is not like a zip line. Other than that, in terms of, you know, wanting the definition about what the role is, I will certainly get information on that and bring it back. I mean, we, again, we're not trying to be, trying to be transparent about what it is that this committee does, and how it fits in with the city. And, you know, it, it really is like the grabhorn process, where, you know, you sit down and debate things and recommend to council. And it's up to council whether they choose to take your recommendations or not. As staff, we don't, we don't approve or disapprove. We, we don't direct that, what comes out of this committee. You know, you say you make a recommendation, we just type it out. Goes to council, and council goes. And so that's, that's how the same thing is gonna be with the parks' master plan, is that over the eight months, this group, community partners, will be talking about what they want for the future, what this community wants for the future, what it does have, what it doesn't have, what it could have, coming up with essentially a large recommendation, which is the master plan, which will be sent to council, and they'll approve it, change it, disapprove it, I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not on council. I don't want to be. But that's, that's essentially where it comes down to.
So I have a couple of comments. So I've been with this committee since it formed. And Joel, did you join the committee initially? Were you on council and part of the Parks Committee initially, or did you come on later? Right. So, and, and so you'll be able to collaborate that with me. So one of the things that I've really noticed is that when we started the Parks Committee, it was very collaborative, people really worked together, and we actually got a lot done. And what I have experienced personally in the, the past year or so is that it's been disjointed. We have not had Dave here for, what, six months? He used to come here every meeting and give us a report, have not seen him. And, and frankly, you know, I've, I've sensed that, that some of staff have been dismissive of people on this committee, and that is inappropriate. We are simply here volunteering our time to make the town better. You know, I put in a lot of time to do the movies, it's come off really well, I volunteer all my time for that. And I think all these people deserve respect and deserve to have their voices heard and to feel like they've been heard. And frankly, that has not happened.
Can, oh, can I say something really fast, Isaac?
Feel free.
First of all, I want to say that, thank you so much for showing up tonight. Because we, we know that you are really the messenger in a lot of this, and you are taking our information and sharing it, and we see that. So anyway, go ahead.
I, I might as well be the last to talk here.
Well, let's, I.
That's fine.
So I echo what everybody else already said. But more importantly from my aspect is, I really feel like we're letting the citizens down. Citizens come up to me and ask, what's going on with parks? Has there been any changes on this subject or this subject? And I feel like I try to represent, be a conduit to the city. And while the city thinks they're transparent, I don't think the citizens feel that way, and it's really hard for me to feel that way. We went out on the Grabhorn GPHC, and we talked to citizens, lots of them. They told us, a lot of them told us that we're wasting our time, that the city doesn't listen to us, they don't care what the citizens have to say. Me being new to SCAPUs, I, I didn't believe that, to be honest. We asked what they wanted. We create a master list of what amenities we want to bring to this city from the citizens. Not once did a zip line come up that said people want it, that doesn't mean they don't want it. But if this, if it was so-called on the list from Dave, why aren't we told, hey, let's ask about a zip line as well, let's find out what's needed? I really feel that everybody here gives their heart and soul to this, and as volunteers, taking our time to this, it's just getting harder and harder to work with the city. Wouldn't it take much for Dave to say, hey, guys, I've been asked to come in front of the council, here's what I'm thinking, here's what I'm gonna present, what do you guys think? I want to let you know what's going on. That's five minutes of time. We could have asked a simple question, hey, Dave, what about this? Okay, thanks. This is how people work in this world, this is how communities work. And it hasn't been happening here at all. And it's a real shame, because I personally worked really hard to connect with everybody here. And I know everybody's heart is in the right place. But then when I look at my two-plus years here, I know that we really accomplished nothing, and it really makes me sad.
Can I add something? Okay. Well, I'm just kind of in the middle, and I kind of need to be in the liaison here for this group. But I can give my opinion as a volunteer since 2007 in many of the committees. My observation, this is my personal observation. I know ideally we want the staff and everybody to be as front, I think, my personal opinion, I think the city is trying to be as transparent. I think, being that I've been on both sides, and it's, it's a lot of work on the backend that people don't see. And it's worse, it's a small staff. So, I mean, we're all people, right? There's a limited time and hours in a day, I'm not making excuses. I'm just saying that, being that, okay, well, you guys would like being more transparent, you want Dave here, okay, then, you know, you can call Dave, but Dave, of course, has, I was looking at his list of things that he's doing, it's like, wow, amazing, what he's doing consistently on a daily basis. So I, I just, you know, I just want to say, thank you for sharing. And I think being open about how you feel, that's the first step of being, you know, being commutative. So just thank you for your input, and for your volunteer time, we appreciate it. And we appreciate the staff as well, and we appreciate, because I think we're all trying to do good for the city. I think we shouldn't be divided on that.
But I don't think we should, I don't, I, I think we need to be more collaborative. I mean, there has been a serious disconnect that is unacceptable. And I've done a lot of volunteering in my day. And I continue to do that, because I think that's what good citizens do. But at the end of the day, people need to be felt valued and heard, and things need to be implemented in order to have that happen. So, and I think those are the frustrations that are expressed here. I'm excited at the prospect that working on this new master plan, you know, may bring people together, because that certainly did so with us when we did the master plan years ago. So I think that is definitely one step, I'm, I'm excited to have a professional actually working on it. You know, but, but I, I think that part of volunteering and, and doing this stuff is actually seeing tangible results and getting some kind of recognition that that time is valuable, and that has not happened.
Hey, I respectfully disagree with that. And, and I, I know you think I'm gonna say that, and I am, and I gotta be honest, we, in the last year, have brought the skate park project to you, that would not have happened without this committee. You brought the metal sphere outside the front of City Hall to you, that would not have happened. The redesign of Grabhorn, the data collection, the removal of the road per council's request, the looking at those amenities hard, that would not have happened without this committee. And I, I disagree that this committee's been disconnected, I disagree that this committee has been out of the loop. I think that there's some things that have fallen through the cracks, and I respect that you feel that way. Because you're right, there's some things that have been inconsistent. But all of those things are achievements that this group has put together and done, that was not staff, that was this committee doing that. You know, we, we asked for you to support on that, and you, every single one of those things was done. So I think there's a problem, I think that, that that is, you know, that's coming through your really true heartfelt remarks about what you feel about your role and how you feel about this process. But I want you to know that I think that everybody who pays attention, who is watching what this committee does, is seeing that things are changing. Maybe not every single one does, but you've done a lot the last year. And I've been with this committee for two years now, and those are not things staff had time for, those are not things that would have happened. So I think that what I would like to do is take this back to staff, Dave to Alex, and let them know, have them listen to your recording, because I don't think that I should be saying your words for you, and get a response from them.
I do want to add one thing, you know, I, I know that pickleball and zip line are not apples to apples. So one thing that we have in requesting would be inclusive play equipment, and that would have been something that could have been fantastic here. So just, I don't want to, I don't want to beat that too much, I know you, we only have so much time left. But just as a, as a comparison of something like where we could have really come in and said, yes, this is really something that this community is asking for.
And I, I don't know, I mean, I know Dave pretty well, you know, he, he does value the committee, he values citizen input. And I don't know, maybe, maybe he has a plan that I'm not privy to. Maybe he looked at it and said, $25,000 isn't gonna get us a whole lot of inclusive playground, and we, we need a bigger amount of money. And this is what we have this year, I, I don't know. But I do know that he'll listen, I do know that he won't care what you've said tonight. Do know that he will have an answer, because he always does, it's a reason. And, you know, he's been here longer than I have, he's been here since that master plan, he knows the history with the Miller Park, how that happened. That kind of misstep, miscommunication. So I, I would suspect that he will come or have a good answer. But I, again, I'm not Dave.
Right. Appreciate that, thank you, Isaac.
Just to reiterate, I will make sure that they listen to this, and, and I'll tell them, but I, I will urge them to listen, because I don't want to speak for you. My role to interface, but not necessarily to.
Isaac, the one thing, you know, I'm glad that you think that we've gotten some things done. But, you know, the one thing that I would hope the city would have learned is that you can't do things in a vacuum. And five months after the Grabhorn property was purchased, a completed engineering design was done without any public input, and almost gavelled and passed by the city council. And it took a change.org, letter-writing slash signature campaign to kind of wake the city up and say, hey, wait a minute, we don't want this road through a park, and we don't want how it's set up. And I thought the city realized, hey, we need to get more input from people, we can't work in a vacuum. And, okay, thank you, we did a good job on the GPHC, we went out there and worked our butts off to find out what people wanted. So did that maybe change how the city works with us? I don't think it has. Hey, Dave, Dave's got an idea about a zip line, give it to us. I mean, we're, we'll do your legwork for you, we'll find out if people want this. I mean, it, it's, it's simple. And so for you to tell us on one side that we did a great job, and then continually being reflected that we're active, sometimes I think the city thinks we're a nuisance, to be honest, and I, I don't mean that in a, the worst way. But to have a presentation, you know, as you know, I go to city council meetings, and I do a lot of public comments. And to be told, hey, we're not doing anything, Paul, we don't have any money, hey, you know, we can't do pickleball because of this, this, and this. And then Dave coming up and saying, we're doing all these things, and city council going, hey, oh, great, great, great. Again, I don't think we could have defined anything to be as exclusive as that. I mean, it would not take much for the city to come to us and say, guys, there's gonna be an update this week. You don't need to meet, you could have sent it to us on email, because it was all public document that eventually went out. If anyone has any input on this document, we're open for suggestions. Simple things like this, simple things of Dave saying, I'm proposing a zip line, but I want to float that out to the, to Parks, the Parks Committee, and I want to get some citizen input first. Simple things like that, they're not happening. I think this is a reflection, little shark fins, of what JJ's talked to me about. I, I'd love to have the days when everybody worked together again, which is why we're trying to do things in the background, because it's not happening. So thank you very much for your comments that you think we got some stuff done, but we're not seeing it back from the city with regards to how things are actually being implemented.
I will reiterate that I didn't say that everything was perfect. I did say that this committee did, that I felt there was a comment to the contrary.
Okay. Any additional comment? Let's move on to MIG introductions.
Yeah, so MIG's not here tonight, we were gonna introduce you to the consultants for the master plan. What they really wanted to get done tonight was, beyond that, was to start identifying the additional stakeholder groups that should be involved. And they wanted for you to weigh in and start defining those and help us craft the group. So the county, of course, is somebody we've talked about, but we wanted to get your ideas and your concepts about who we should be reaching out to, what their role might be in this, so you can start creating a list of people to invite to meetings, to do outreach with, to communicate with about what their needs are. So really, this is just kind of a time for you to talk about what you know, who should be on, in the room. And it, it's not limited to one part of the process, it's like all the voices, so. Really, since they're not here tonight, I guess my role is to kind of listen to what you have to say about who should be here the next eight months.
Well, I think what have been helpful is if we had known they weren't going to be here, and that's what you would have wanted, because then we could have done some work on that.
If I had known, I would have let you know.
Okay, so, so I mean, that, yeah, so I mean, that's the, you know, that's the challenge, so.
I mean, my initial.
We can, we can pass on this if, if that's what you like.
I mean, there's definitely some, like, school boards, SCAPUs, Bay Waterside Council.
We should pass until we get more information. Try to talk about it now, I think we can do a better job.
Instead, well, okay, instead of waiting, like, instead of just creating like a small list of stakeholders, are you wanting to hear?
MIG's a professional organization, I think we should hear what they have to say first.
Okay.
And then listen to their recommendations. They've done some great master plans, and I'd like to hear it from them first, I think we'd be better off.
Okay, we can do that.
I can review the tentative schedule if you'd like, that's still something you'd like to see, or you, would you like to wait for MIG on that as well?
I think we should wait for MIG.
That's the way the committee feels?
Any other thoughts? Any other? Kim, Andrew?
Nope, I'm good with waiting for MIG.
Is the time in the meeting where we have discussion?
We do have time for, because.
Surprisingly late, we do.
Yeah, all right.
So I'd like to bring up another topic that was made to us, which is public meeting law. So we were informed via email that discussions via email about agendas and such, I think it was actually agenda items, would be a violation of public meeting law. So I read public meeting law, and the law says simply that any governing body of a public body is required to comply to public meeting law. And a public body is boards, departments, committees. A government body is two or more members of a public body who make recommendations to a public body on policy or administration. Agendas are not policy. So I repeat, the public meeting law is around groups like us giving recommendations to a public body on policy. So with that, according to public meetings law, we indeed can converse via email about agenda items and such, as it is not a recommendation on policy to the board. So you might say to me, oh, that's not the case, Paul, what do you know? So I heard from Robin M. Klein, the intern assistant general manager of the League of Oregon Cities, sorry, assistant general counsel. And I asked her specifically, this is what she does for a living. She says, as long. She says, as long as committee members are not making a policy, policy decision, policy decision outside of properly publicly noticed meeting, serial communication rules do not apply. Thus, we can discuss these things as long as we're not talking about policy. So what's great about this is that we had a discussion, the city had some questions. And actually, the League of Oregon Cities is often referenced. They're a great asset. I reached out to them. I heard from their general counsel. And in their opinion, and I'm, feel free, I will share this with anyone, we can discuss these things. So I'm concerned that, you know, it's another, I think a lot of us are trying to communicate better and work together more. And you know, the, we have used email in the past. And I'm not saying that this, it's a way to try to keep us from not communicating, but there are rules for sure. But I didn't, I did not appear like we're breaking them at all.
Nanette, did you have comment?
I was just, you know, getting the information because it actually just came up and I was talking to Peter about, I mean, I, everything I do, obviously it's legal. But from what I know and my experience is that anything that, in council, we cannot do that. It's just because everything is public. Meeting is public. It's being recorded. The agenda gets approved. It's being recorded that it's being approved. Everything is public. And so there, if it's internal emails, then how is that public? So, I mean, you're talking about transparency, right? And so I, maybe specifically if you wanted to bring up a topic or a conversation, I think that's what we're, this section is. We are in discussion. You can bring it up. So then you, everybody can know, it can be reported. You can discuss, you guys can discuss as a group, as a committee. I think that's my knowledge. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Real fast, Emily, I see that your hand is raised. Do you have a comment on this? Would you like to hold off?
I will happily hold off. Thank you.
As a city before you go, as a, I have to abide by our legal counsel. They direct staff and advise us on legal risks, just like they do the city council. And we've been advised that those are policy violations at this level. So I, I am not a lawyer, but I also am not going to wade in on this one either. Those reasons, but I, all my only statement is, is that we follow legal counsel's direction. Their job is to advise on legal risk. Tell us where our missteps may or may not be.
Isaac, are you saying that you will not bring this to the, to the legal counsel?
No, I'm saying that I am not going to make any statements in here about what I think the law is or isn't. And that the email that was received was crafted with the advice and consent of our lawyer who did review the communications and felt that they were a violation of public meeting law. But I will take the concern back to him and go from there.
Kim?
Yeah, what I would just add is, I mean, I think what Councilor Santiago outlines is entirely appropriate for city council because they are a, a policymaking body, right? We are not, we are, I guess, even calling into question if we are an advisory body, right? So we don't quite have the same responsibility. But I do, I, I absolutely do support the concept of transparency. And so, you know, I know that myself personally, when we have been communicating about things, I always do make sure that like Hugh and Isaac are CC'd because I know that that becomes in essence, a, a public record, right? Like it is discoverable, it is, if someone wanted information request, it could be pulled. You know, I had also put out the suggestion that if we do have a thread of correspondence around a topic that, you know, is potentially leading to an agenda item, that that just be printed out and put in our reading packet. That's another way to make a public record. So, you know, I, I hope that we can find a happy medium in how we can handle this where we can still continue to collaborate outside of these meetings because there's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done if we're going to be successful, particularly with this Parks Master Plan. That was certainly the case with Grabhorn. We were encouraged to collaborate outside of meetings for Grabhorn. And so I hope we can create a kind of a climate of collaboration that is both productive and, you know, fully transparent. So Isaac, you know, however we can achieve that, I think that's the goal.
I'm going to read you a segment of public meeting law. This committee is subject to it. Public meeting law applies to any governing body of a public body. Public body is, dot, 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 any agency of those entities such as a board, department, commission, council, bureau, committee, subcommittee, or advisory group. This group, as you just said, is advisory. This group is subject to public meeting law. So what that is, that's not, I'm not going to go there. But this, this group is, as you've said, an advisory body and is subject to the same public meeting laws and rules that council has. That's why this discussion is happening.
Sure. And I mean, that's absolutely true. I've had to deal with violations of various meetings in the past. One resource that I found to be very helpful is the Oregon Sunshine Committee. They actually work with people on that and they are extremely knowledgeable. So I do understand the importance of following the, the law regarding meetings. And I'm quite knowledgeable and success, it's successful in enforcing some of those things, so.
I'm no lawyer. This is why I reached out to an expert. And this expert said that procedural decisions are permissible. And not, and of course, policy, policy decisions, that's a different story. Talking about an agenda item is procedural, not policy. So the thing about laws, you can pick it apart, take one word out, blah, 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 blah. The city council has, and the, and the, our city attorney has many times said, League of Oregon City says this, League of Oregon City says this, which is why I went to the League of Oregon Cities directly. I can share this with anyone who wants to see it. And we can go from there.
I think what, I mean, just so much really, I mean, has to happen. Like going through the Grabhorn process, Kim is correct, like so much had to happen like outside of our individual meetings in order to make that successful. And so if we could find a way, I, I'm 100% would like to make sure that we follow all the policies, that we have transparency. But so if we could find a way that where we can collaborate, collaborate and we are following all those, I think that would be the most ideal situation. Whether or not like everything, just Susan Reeves is CC'd and everything, there's an opportunity for that can be put on a website. I am open to all of that.
Maybe we can have that discussion with Peter, their legal counsel, and he can probably come up with type of process. I'm not sure. I mean, because Isaac and I are not, we're not attorney beaters.
No, I
Following what council
No, I, I think from my perspective, I think the biggest group, or the biggest challenge is this is how we were kind of encouraged to communicate. And all of a sudden there's a giant stop to that. And so now we're like, well, how do we continue? Like, how do we, how do we continue to continue to collaborate? To do what's best in the interest of the city, to have transparency and still move forward when we only meet one hour.
The committee changed since the beginning of that, and what it was and what it is now?
No.
The bylaws, the bylaws that were made of establishment of the same bylaws we operate under now.
Right.
Been some very minor changes.
So it's just this procedure has totally changed. And so we are looking for some guidance on how we can continue and collaborate. And, I mean, we've got guidance on how now we can share, how to share information. Everything goes to Isaac and then Isaac then shares to the group. But it's just, that's, that's a massive change that's happened over this past month.
One more topic on this. We are in violation of public meetings law. With this agenda, a meeting notice, notice must include a list of principles subjects should be considered at a meeting. The list must be specific enough to permit citizens to recognize matter of interest. And subjects such as city update is too general and would not suffice. Would have to be discussion of proposed zip line installation, for example. Again, let's just make sure. So you can look that up and have your city attorney ask for that one too. Again, this is League of Oregon Cities.
On that note, tomorrow night Beetlejuice.
Thank you, JJ.
Free.
Okay. All right, we have the next meeting. Do we have any additional discussion?
It's free.
Free.
Live music, free.
Only 80 degrees without humidity.
The only nice day of the week, free.
At this point, can we ask for agenda items for next week?
For next month?
Next month?
Yes, would be great, yeah.
There's been a lot of discussion about, and from citizens, about the Grabhorn property, the Grabhorn design, where are we? It has been quite a long time. So we haven't really received a formal update from the city in a while.
I think we did last month, right?
Well, there's, there are new, we have yet to see the the Arborist report.
I think that was, that said end of August.
Well, again, let's put it on next, next will be September.
That'll be perfect.
On the schedule.
Well, I think the other thing with regarding Grabhorn that I think would be helpful too is that if it is too much of a challenge to put a road through the park, which seems to be a big objection with a number of people, what are things that we can do to move this forward and get the grant? Because we don't want to lose that grant and we will unless we can agree on what we can do and submit it.
I think it would also be helpful to understand more about what the parking lot means to the city. Like what, I think there's been discussion of engineering design with the parking lot. That was shared by Alex. So like what, what, which they are thinking that would look like? Or if, do we have to just wait for what the engineering comes with? That would be helpful.
And would it be possible to have whoever's in charge of actually the project to come to the meeting? Thank you.
Right, it is after seven, so we will adjourn for tonight. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.